Ready to go, okay.
That's gone already.
We'll call the November ninth meeting of the Planning Commission to order. We'll begin with the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the best of all, liberty and justice for all.
Jess, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Semperman.
Here.
Ms. Moritz.
Here.
Mr. Perkovic.
Here.
Mr. Sidoti.
Here.
Mr. Valeri.
Here.
Mr. Varga.
Here.
Mr. Snow.
Here. Entertained a motion for the approval of the minutes of the October 19th meeting.
So moved.
Second. Jess.
Mrs. Semperman.
Yes.
Ms. Moritz.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Epstein.
Mr. Sidoti.
Yes.
Mr. Valeri.
Epstein.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. We have public hearings this evening. The format we follow for public hearings is we allow the applicant an opportunity to make a presentation of what they'd like to do at the location. Then anyone wishing to speak in favor is afforded a similar opportunity than those wishing to speak against are given an opportunity to speak against. So with that in mind, we'll have the first public hearing this evening. Conditional use permit to allow motorcycle and recreational vehicle sales and service as a similar use at 9440 Mercantile. Is that applicant here?
Yes.
Okay, would you identify yourself for the clerk, please?
My name is Brad Scholl.
And give us a little quick overview of what you want to do at that location.
I am seeking conditional use permit for the purpose of motorcycle and ATV recreational vehicle sales and service at 9440 Mercantile Drive.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak against? Okay, we'll close the public portion. Mr. Ratzter, anything you'd like to add?
Nothing.
Nothing. Commission members, questions for the applicant? Mr. Sidoti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening.
Good evening.
When I went down there the other day to check it out, I noticed right across from your unit, 9440, there's a waste management dumpster just sort of there, and then there's a bigger dumpster that looks like it's owned by DeMulta. It's taken up about four and a half parking spaces. It's right in front of your doors as you cross that narrow parking lot. You know what the story is for that?
That I am not sure of the details. I have talked to some of the surrounding business members, and I have yet to find an answer on what is that, what the details are regarding that dumpster.
Larry, do we have a problem with that? I mean, you can just put a dumpster in a parking lot like that and have another dumpster there for scraps?
The one dumpster is for scrap metals from the one company. As far as dumpsters in the parking lot, this building was reviewed and approved many years ago prior to our ordinances which state the dumpsters have to be enclosed. We did cite the property owner, and I believe we carbon copied the one tenant, the roofing company in there concerning the storage of materials outside. And they're scheduled to be in compliance sometime next week is when their compliance date is.
All right, well, it sounds like you've been out there, correct?
Correct.
All right, you see at the end of the parking lot, when you go in, it's at the very end, and it's completely littered with busted up pallets. There's wood all over.
They've been cited for that.
Garbage overflowing on the dumpster, there's wood. It's a mess. So I'd like to go on record is if they don't clean it up, can we cite them? Because it's a...
We have.
Go ahead.
They have been given a citation, and as I said, I think it's November 15th is when their compliance date is. If they are not in compliance, another letter will go out, and then we'll forward it to the law department.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I have a question. The motorcycles that you're going to be selling there, do you have a franchise or are those just bikes that you've worked on that people may want to sell?
They are primarily used vehicles.
Okay.
Purchased through private exchange and private sales.
Gotcha. Okay. Mr. Zeeman, any questions? Are there any concerns that we need to worry about there?
I think the one condition relative to them not being stored or displayed outside, as shown on the interior plan, there's going to be sort of a display area.
That should take care of everything?
It should, as the commission's aware. Quite a long time ago, there was some precedent established that these types of motorcycle ATVs were similar in use, apparently, to construction vehicles. I'm not really sure. So there is some precedent for allowing...
That seems to be the catch-all. Similar use to what? But we'll save that for another time.
I wasn't privy to that discussion. That was, I think, a long time ago.
Okay. Mrs. Semperman?
I have a question for Mrs. Zeeman, because you mentioned it. So are they allowed to have vehicles for sale in the parking lot?
I believe as proposed, the answer to that is no. I thought the conditions indicated.
It says no junk dismantled or unlicensed motorcycles or ATVs.
Within the staff report, there was some reference.
Right, right. That's why I'm questioning if we need to change one of our conditions or add a condition.
Generally, motorcycles and ATVs aren't stored outside. They're just too easy to take if one were so inclined. But, you know, I'd refer that to the applicant relative to...
Yeah, but I think they could be out during normal business hours, they would be outside.
Again, I refer that to the applicant as to exactly...
I know.
Now, again, this is a multi-tenant center, so, and obviously parking's even further limited, apparently, due to dumpster locations, so that there's some practical issues relative to utilizing any outdoor display areas. But that's a discussion. If the Planning Commission doesn't approve some area for outdoor storage and display of these vehicles, then there is no outdoor storage or display of these vehicles.
Is that, that's fine with you?
That is fine with me. I have, according to my floor plan, designated a 24 by 20 section within the shop for display vehicles.
Inside the building?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
So, I think you need to...
I would like to...
Add that.
Right. I would like to add to condition number three, no junk dismantled, licensed, or unlicensed motorcycles or ATVs. So just add the word licensed in there.
That's fine with you, correct?
I think you might add storage or display.
It says shall be stored outside the building. Is that sufficient enough?
Storage implies some longer period.
So you want me to write, we should write...
I'd add display as well, because that would apply to...
Stored or displayed.
Correct.
So the entire condition would read, no junk dismantled, licensed, or unlicensed motorcycles or ATV shall be stored or displayed outside the building. You agreeable with that? Thank you. Motion to approve with five conditions.
Second. Yes?
Mrs. Semperman.
Yes.
Ms. Moritz.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sidoti.
Yes.
Mr. Valeri.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Items two and three are conditional use permits to allow car washes 86 to 98 Mentor Avenue and a modification to the buffer. Is that right, Mr. Ratzter?
Yes.
Okay. Guys, you're on. Oh, the guys aren't on. The architect is on.
He's out of here before.
Joe, identify yourself for the clerk.
I'm the architect for the project. And several of the owners are here. If we have any questions for them...
I think we're going to tackle both, both under one item here.
Okay. That'd be good.
So, go right ahead.
So, this is an existing property that already has the drive-through beverage store. It also had a oil, oil change place that has been torn down since, has already been torn down or been demolished. And then there's a drive, self-serve car wash that's on the property now that will be also taken down. They're proposing to put up a new drive-through car wash that you, you know, enter and it pulls the car through for you. It has a couple detail base. So it'd be a new building set up to, to be okay with the building that is on the site already, but fit into the historic district for car wash. And currently, the property extends pretty much right to the property lines or very close to the property lines. What they're proposing is to regain at least a 20-foot buffer around the corner, which would allow room for the cars to still form a queue coming out of the back of the car wash. They would be putting in a new eight-foot privacy fence. The owners of the car wash have had a conversation with the resident there. It's their fence currently that they had put up, but it's about six feet into the car wash property, and they agreed to take down that fence and erect a new eight-foot privacy fence in the same location where the original one was, so that it doesn't reduce the size of the neighbor's yard any, because they've kind of are taking advantage of the six feet onto their property. And with doing that, they don't seem to have any issue with the fact that we're having a 20-foot barrier instead of the 25. They'll be protected with that fence, and we'll be adding landscaping to that. Across the back, we have the 25-foot buffer. We had a couple parking spaces and a dumpster area in it. The staff report suggested that the dumpster area is not a good use for, or not a good thing to be have located in the buffer area. So we re-prepared a plan that would move the dumpster area out of the 25-foot buffer area, and so that there would only be three parking spaces and then land bank parking spaces across the back. And then, of course, there'd be landscaping in that area. So we're here tonight to get a conditional use permit for a reduction in the buffer that, as we, to the two residential properties, and then also we need a conditional use permit to operate a car wash in a B2 business district, and then we'd like preliminary site plan approval.
Okay. We'll get to the site plan later on the agenda. So we're talking about the two conditional use permits right now.
Okay.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Any additional people? Anyone?
We're one of the residences that...
I need you, I need you at the podium and identify yourself, because we are broadcasting this, so we need to be up there by the microphone. And if you identify yourself for the clerk, please.
My name is Margaret Zito, and we're one of the residences that adjoin this property. Nobody's discussed anything with us. We currently have an eight-foot fence along the back. Nobody has approached us or discussed anything with us. Are you guys going to be up against it? I do believe they need our approval.
You need to direct your comments this way.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
The reason that we're here is to try to find out exactly what's going on, because we have not been approached about any of this. And we currently have a fence that I know is in the right spot, because we've had our property surveyed many times.
Okay.
So...
So, I need your address.
8701 Parker Drive. And I have a lot of questions. My husband and I have a lot of questions.
Go ahead.
First of all, I'd like to know how far away they're going to be from the property line.
Okay.
Second of all, we have an issue right now with Chase's Delaney's. They have their garbage emptied at like 6:00 a.m. in the morning, and that's like a big garbage full of glass beer. And I do believe we have an ordinance against that. We have a lot of noise issue with Chase's Delaney's now. We have a lot of noise issue with the VHW now. And when the car wash was open, because the back part of it is so close to our property, people were always there jamming out with their music, which I'm not against music, but the bass literally vibrates my house.
I understand.
So I have a real issue about anything that's going on that's going to be closer to our property line.
Okay. Are those the questions?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, those are the questions.
Okay, and we'll get answers before we're done.
Concerns.
Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Meyer?
In regards to the eight-foot fence that's on their property line, that fence would remain. The staff suggested that the owners of the car wash do the continued maintenance on the fence, because it's required as far as the car wash is concerned, but they would keep that. It's a, it's a pretty new, nice-conditioned eight-foot fence. So the intention was is to put our new eight-foot fences up to and abut that eight-foot fence that's existing on their property line, so it wouldn't move at all. The staff report said that they would like to get permission to abut their fence. I think when they spoke to the other neighbor, they attempted to go and to see if they could find them, and nobody was home at the time, so they didn't get to talk to them, but they do intend to talk about getting permission to abut their fence with the new eight-foot fence. But the idea is to leave their eight-foot fence there.
Okay.
The drive would be further from the fence than the drive currently is now entering the car wash, so we're not getting it...
I think Larry, Larry was taking notes on the Chase's and the VFW, right?
Correct. As far as...
We can address that. I mean, that's certainly a concern that you have, and it's a concern that obviously we'll have too, but we're only talking about the car wash at this time, so...
Um...
Anything else?
I answered the questions.
Okay.
No.
Hi, Jeff McCann, one of the owners. One thing I think I can add, for hours of operation and for dumpster use, at least for our, for our property.
Right.
Hours of operation for us will be eight to eight, seven days a week, so we won't be starting, you know, earlier than eight. And as far as noise goes, I think the sound that you were talking about, because it was a self-wash, car wash prior, obviously, people could pull in and kind of go at their leisure. With a tunnel wash system, obviously, you know, they're pulling through, the car is fully sealed, you know, windows are up, so I don't think you're going to have any noise issues with that, obviously, with the tunnel wash system. And then as far as the dumpster stuff goes, certainly, when we schedule our dumpster, you know, removal and whatnot...
To take, take advantage of the mentor ordinances on noise, right?
Absolutely. Making sure the time of day and making sure it makes sense.
I'm just, I'm just wondering, we're maybe a little bit ahead of ourselves here. I'm just wondering if those doors on the backside of the car wash can't be kept down.
There will be a garage door for the entrance portion, correct? And especially in the winter time, that door will be going up and down as the...
Because that should do something to mitigate the noise, I would think.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
And we will be reaching out to you to talk about the fence setup and make sure that it matches with what you guys are looking for, for sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Just one last comment would be, you know, this car wash should be fully staffed, so there'd be people that are taking care of what's going on.
Okay.
Where the other one, nobody was there really, so you could pull up and do what you wanted.
Okay. So we'll, we'll help you out as best we can here on this.
Great.
So, anyone wishing to speak against? Any additional people wishing to speak against? Okay, we'll close it. Mr. Ratzter, anything you'd like to add?
As far as the conditional use permit for the car wash goes, you'll notice we've put in there the standard stipulation, or conditions of approval that we have in the past that were crafted at the time. I think it was Zappi's modified theirs to control issues during the winter months, so cars backing up onto the street on good days where everyone needs to get their car washed.
Right. So I'm going to ask those guys, that's, that's not a problem to put that stipulation in there?
No, sir.
Okay.
And I think there was a question around car count, stacking car count to Mentor Avenue. We have 34 as our stack car count, so we should be in pretty good shape as far as, before we even get to that point.
I know. On the sunny days, it's really tough at Hightland and Mentor Avenue, as you can well imagine, so...
Yes.
We want to eliminate that kind of activity.
I think you're familiar with what they do at Zappi's. They have to put a sign out and...
Correct. Yes, correct.
I don't think they have an issue with doing that, if it comes to that.
Well, know that that may be a possibility. That's, that's why we're bringing it up.
Yeah, if that's a stipulation, they're okay with that.
Good, okay.
And as far as the, are the conditional use permit for the modification to the buffer, the administration is recommending that be tabled at this point, so that the landscape issues can be resolved. But we also would like, also put in the staff report that those parking spaces, along with the dumpster, be eliminated from that 25-foot rear yard or that 25-foot buffer.
Well, I think you agree to remove the dumpster from that...
We removed the dumpster, yes.
Okay, but do you want to see the plan?
We want to, well, we want to see the parking spaces removed too, as part of the final.
Okay. You can do that, right?
Would it be possible to, instead of putting in any parking spaces, just have the land bank space that they currently, we don't think that they're going to need those parking spaces? I mean, if we, if they have, you know, four or five people operating the car wash, two people doing the beverage store, and a couple people dropping their car off to get detailed, they might need eight or nine cars. We have 12 spaces we could do without those three in the back, but it'd be nice to know that it was a possibility if they were...
I think the concern is the buffer's the buffer, right?
Correct. It's something that we can't give you a definite answer on right now until we see a better landscape plan for that buffering. It's possibly, the possibility would be land banking them would work, but we would need to see how the landscaping's being handled, and then obviously, to keep those there, to have them removed, would be up to the commission.
And that would give them time to meet with these folks here.
Correct.
To work out something along the fencing that they asked for. So you won't have, I'm getting a nod back there from the owners. So we can do, we can do the car wash CUP, but we'll table the buffer modification to give you an opportunity to work on that.
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Semperman?
I would just like to say that I wouldn't, I don't want to even see land banked places, spots. You've got the 10-foot side yard set back that you're allowed to do something with. You don't have to adhere to a 10-foot side yard setback. I don't know if you read that in the report or not, Mr. Meyer?
Yes, no, I did.
And, you know, as these residents had, had mentioned, there was a problem with the car wash, or no, before, and I think that we need to try to keep that 25-foot setback back there for them. So...
So, is that, is that okay?
Um...
We'll approve, we could approve the, depending on how the vote goes. We could approve the CUP for the car wash, and then we'll table the CUP for the buffer modification.
Yeah, we're, we're okay with giving up those parking spaces and just adhering to the 25-foot on the back line. I think we're okay with that.
Does that change your thoughts, Larry?
Yeah, in that case, could you get the...
Well, that's, I'm, I'm looking...
Because then I guess we don't need a CUP in the back, because we'd be maintaining the 25-foot...
On the side, yeah.
...buffer. We wouldn't be asking for a modification to it.
The conditional use permit for the buffer modification includes landscaping. The set amount of material is required to be in there per the ordinance. As of right now, they don't have that. It's very little landscaping shown back there, so we would still recommend that it be tabled until we can get additional landscaping indicated back there.
So that could be done at, at the final, right?
At the final, when they submit for the final, if they get through everything the night, and when they come back for the final, we can address the...
Okay.
...buffer conditioning use permit at that time, which is normally when we will see a modification to a buffer, is usually at the final stage.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah, we can certainly do that.
Okay. Commission members, any questions? Additional questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion on the item two.
Motion to approve for a conditional use permit to allow a car wash.
Second. Mrs. Semperman.
Yes.
Ms. Moritz.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sidoti.
Yes.
Mr. Valeri.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Now, there are five stipulations. You meant five stipulations, did you not, Mrs. Semperman?
Five conditions.
Five conditions? I don't think I heard that.
I didn't say five conditions. That's correct.
Mr. Zeeman, do we need to vote on that again?
I, I think that was clear that the...
Okay, so we're good?
Conditions were included in the approval.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to table...
So moved.
Item three.
Second. Mrs. Semperman.
Yes.
Ms. Moritz.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sidoti.
Yes.
Mr. Valeri.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay? And then in the meantime, you can get with these folks, just to work out that fence.
They could exchange phone numbers tonight.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just got a question for the administration, not necessarily with you. Do we know why the residents would not have been notified, since they directly abut the...
They would have been notified by mail through our notification process. I think what she was referring to, I don't want to put words in her mouth, was the applicants never actually spoke to her concerning what was going on.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Joe.
Okay. Are we next?
Yeah. Well, we've got to decide, item four stays on the table, correct?
Correct.
Now, at some point, I think some contact needs to be made with those...
Next meeting.
They'll be here for, for sure?
Yep, we got the drawing.
Oh, good. Okay. He's back. Item five under new business. Preliminary site plan of a commercial building at 8698 Mentor Avenue. Preliminary site plan.
I kind of gave a whole explanation. Is there any other questions or further explanation?
Well, I think since we're in the preliminary site plan, and you brought some building elevations, I think...
Yes.
We might as well address some of the building elevation suggestions. Mr. Varga, did you have a comment you'd like to...
Yeah, I just have, first of all, I think it's, it's a nice building for that area. I think you've done a good job. I just have one concern that I'd like to talk about. I don't like to see vinyl siding on a commercial building, especially in the old town district, you know? I'd like to see that changed to a composite board with the same profile. You know, I don't change the way it looks, but I don't like to see vinyl on a building. I think that's for residential and for that matter, not, not high-end residential. So I'd like to see a more durable product, because I'm afraid vinyl doesn't last, doesn't hold up. It's also red, which means it has a very high capacity to fade, and you can't paint it or do anything with it once it starts to deteriorate. So I would like to recommend, certainly there's still be discussion about it, but I'd like to recommend that you change the vinyl to some kind of board that can be painted and, and maintained over the life of the building.
Any thoughts on that, Joe? Identify yourself for the clerk, please.
Glenn Montz. We could certainly look into that for you. I know originally, we were looking at the siding, you know, the buildings around us that were sited, you know, Delaney's, and then Brunner's Funeral Home that just went up. So we were, we were under the impression that it was okay in that area. I understand, you know, the concern with the fading. You know, I guess from our standpoint too, we were looking at what is a, we didn't want to have to paint something every, you know, couple years if it was something that was the chip or fade, so we were trying to look for something that was more durable from that aspect, but the fading aspect, I do understand. I mean, we'd definitely look into that for you, if that's the way that you would like us to think.
Yeah, I kind of, I just also from, for a commercial building rather than a residential building, I'd like to see that finish to be more durable. And to be honest, yes, you might have to paint it, but with the vinyl, there's really nothing you can do with the vinyl. You can't paint vinyl. I mean, if you try to do that, it's, you're going to have even a bigger problem. So, so I'd like to see a more durable material. I'm not dictating what it is. You can maintain the exact look. I think the building looks fine. There's a lot of composite boards that you can use that will give you that same look.
It's a big price difference between vinyl and, and that composite board. I don't know if you're prepared to just say, just see?
I would have to look into it.
You haven't established the car wash prices yet, have you?
Forty dollars, fifty dollars.
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Semperman?
Mr. Varga, can you give me an example of where this has been used? Because I'm a little confused. Like, the applicant has mentioned Brunner's next door just had one that went up with vinyl, and...
These are the two buildings on either side of it, or...
And they're both vinyl.
Right, so I'm a little confused as to what kind of siding you're asking.
My first point of sensitivity was the color. I, I think it's fine. I like it. I mean, I think it's a tractable building, but I know that vinyl, red vinyl siding is very susceptible to fading because of its color, and it just, it just does. And once that happens, there's nothing you can do about it, except replace it, which is not really something you'd want to do too.
Mr. Varga, or Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Semperman?
Won't the same thing happen if you have a board?
No.
The same kind of fading?
Well, if you paint a board, you can refurbish that paint.
You can refurbish vinyl, too?
No, not if, not if the color, it's, in the material fades.
I, I understand that, but it can be replaced easily enough.
Well, you can replace it, but then that's, if you start replacing the vinyl every six years, it's, you've got to...
You, you don't have an example of somewhere around here that we've used what you're recommending?
Well, that, I think Mr. Meyer knows what I'm talking about. It's...
Well, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, it's a very common construction material.
It's, I, how to say, it's, it's a lot to ask to increase the budget significantly to add something to it that isn't predominantly used throughout the city. I know they have pride in what they are doing. They wanted the red vinyl because it's the Cardinal Car Wash. My opinion would be that they would be taking care of it and keeping the vinyl as good as they could. If it really faded out and looked bad, they would probably be replacing the vinyl, because they're proud of their building, and that's what, you know, if it was painted and the paints began to peel and they were not providing maintenance on it or doing anything about it, it would look bad as well. So I think in either case, it's going to be up to the, to the owners of the establishment to, to maintain the vinyl or to maintain paint...
So, I think in either case, it's gonna be up to the, to the owners of the establishment to, to maintain the vinyl or to maintain painting a, a different type of material.
Anything else? Mr. Semperman, do you have another comment?
The administration also would like to, as the staff report stated, different doors if possible, more, if there is an option for more of a carriage type, something more in keeping with the neighborhood. And then we also noted that in front of the existing dry-through beverage store, there is pole-mounted transformers that we would like to at least have the applicant.
Those can go down in the ground, right?
We'd like to have them at least explore that option of removing them from the, which would clean up the site.
You might as well just stay there.
You're correct. Actually, sorry. Well, I guess let me just say, as far as the doors go, because again, it's a commercial operation, there are, you know, our cars coming in and out of the car wash, I think that the glass doors are a more appropriate use for a commercial business that you want people to see what your business is about. To put solid doors and just have a dark front to the building, I, I think would be a negative. I think that, that, you know, seeing the activity and the, going on, certainly traditional-looking fire stations, even in the city of Menor, have glass doors on the, on the face of them that, I know they're not historic in nature, that, but I think they're appropriate for a commercial use to see, to, you know, to see what's going on.
Yeah, but this is a little different area of the city. I think that's where the administration was coming from. Am I correct?
Correct. It's the, what's referred to as the old village area. When possible, we like to keep that fill. We understand that it is a commercial business. You do want to have people seeing what's going on inside. It is a car wash too. You know, the use itself kind of dictates what's going on.
So, this is the preliminary, between the preliminary and the final, you can explore that and, and see if there is a product that's made that will satisfy your requirements and satisfy our requirements. Can you do that?
Yes. Does the rest of the board feel the same way about the doors? Is that?
Well.
I know it's, it's, it's being brought up. I mean, if, if you're kind of requiring that we do that, that's one thing if, if
Mr. Chairman?
You're okay with the glass doors.
We'll go to our resident architect here.
Great, thanks. I, I actually don't have a problem with the doors. You, you don't, you're, you're not up on the street and you're not, and I agree, it's more of an interest to see what's going on. And the doors are up and down all the time anyhow. It's not like, so, I don't have a strong feeling about that.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Perkovic?
You done? I, I would also just like to state that, as Mr. Varga has, I don't have a problem with it as well. The other thing that I was gonna mention was, two of those doors are for the detail bay, and I think that would be a real detriment for the detailing to have essentially, right, have no natural light. The other fact is that two of the three doors are virtually not being seen because they're behind that front building. So, in the rendering, it looks like we can see it, but from the street frontage, you'd be really hard-pressed, I think, to see all three of those doors for the matter. So, I really don't have a problem with the glass doors as well.
I'd still like to see it pursued. So, if you could, if you could pursue it, I mean, you get, you get the barometer here of the commission, but I'd like to see it pursued, just to see if it's feasible to do, if there's a cost difference.
Certain combination of.
So, I'm gonna ask that you do that.
Okay. Any comment about the transformer?
Actually, we were speaking about the transformers earlier today. We would like to see them removed as well. So, I just wanted to let you know that we are gonna.
Those transformers don't turn into anything, do they?
Autobots. No. So, yes, we, we were actually addressing that already. We would like to see that removed as well, so.
Okay. So, that's fine.
That's fine.
Okay. Anything else, Larry?
The only other thing concerning the architecture is if there was a way administrative would, administration would like to see if there's a way to tie the front building in with the back building to some degree with either possibly reskinning the front building, doing something with the front building to tie it in somewhat towards the back or make them a little bit more.
Compatible?
Compatible, because we'll have a sited building in the back and a split face up front.
I had contractors out there this week to quote, to look identical to the back building already. So, we are planning on moving the front, well, not moving the front building, taking the front building and making the same as what the back building is to bring them both together.
Thank you.
And if they, if you get something prior to, to the final submission, we can handle it all at that meeting. At one time instead of bringing them back or that.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga?
I'm gonna withdraw my concern about the material, if you do the front building too.
I was gonna say, would it make it more plausible to do the front building as well?
No, I mean, I, I see that as a greater good than just worrying about the maintenance on the material on the back. So, if in fact that's your intention and you can show us some of your ideas when you come back again, then I'll, I withdraw my concern about that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Semperman?
Changing the subject completely here, I'm talking about the drive around the car wash. The administration had suggested, I wasn't even sure what they were suggesting, something about curving the right angle to make it a little less. And I'm not sure what they were talking about exactly. But, anyway, as you go around the west side of the building where the detail area is, it was hard for me to tell when I was on the site today, but it looks like there's a very mature tree somewhere near that vicinity. And I would like to see that tree stay if it could. And I wasn't sure how that tree worked with.
Yeah, I think that's in the middle of the drive aisle, so it would be very difficult to maintain that one. They do plan on putting in nice landscaping with what they do do, including the, the front building. Prior to the meeting, I had placed a copy of the existing condition site plan on your, in front of you. And that tree appears to be adjacent to the existing building, which not having an exact overlay would put it in the middle of the drive aisle. This, the other big tree would be be in the area of the fence, so they would be able to maintain that one. In fact, I think it's on the other side of the fence. So, that canopy would continue to cover that corner of the property.
But, we'll see that on the landscape plan, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, what's the pleasure of the commission? Preliminary site plan. Anybody at all?
I have one of, just one other question or observation. I noticed the, based on your site plan, that the width of the, of the double aisle in places is, is twenty-nine feet at one point or twenty-seven feet. Is it necessary for that driveway to be that wide? I mean, I, I think about an eleven-foot driving aisle, you know, and that's.
I guess because it's the general public, they were trying to loop around. We didn't want to make it too tight and wind up with just mud tracks on the sides of our asphalt because they're driving across the grass, so.
I just wanted if, if, if it was absolutely necessary.
We tried to, I guess, just make them as narrow as we could.
I'm just, I do accept your, your defense relative to the general driving skills of.
If it was my own driveway, I would say no problem.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Valeri?
Again, I know it's just the preliminary, but when it comes to landscaping, we require some landscaping to be along the front of the building. So, I, I believe you guys are gonna need to take a look at the landscaping ordinance and, and add some foundation plannings.
Okay.
So, again, it's preliminary.
I think, I think we probably could.
I think you're gonna need to. So, if you'd be able to just make sure we, we address that then.
Okay.
Motion to approve with the three conditions?
Second.
Yes, when you're ready.
Ms. Semperman?
Yes.
Ms. Moritz?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic?
Yes.
Mr. Sudoti?
Yes.
Mr. Valeri?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes. Now, Joe, we didn't include the stipulation or conditions about the, the garage doors and about the siding on the beverage store. But, know that you're gonna have to work on those.
Okay.
Okay.
We will. And. This is a building that has the red siding with the gray roof. I, I just wanted to bring this up before we get to the final. This is what we're intending to have as far as the look or the colors.
Now, where's that building located?
I don't know. I just came across it when I was looking through the metal siding or the metal roofing. When I saw that they had one together with the red siding, I thought it was a good image to show you to get a feel for what the.
Now, you guys are gonna get with these folks?
Nope.
Exchange numbers, whatever? Okay, good. Item six. Preliminary review of a parking lot expansion with a thirty-foot setback. Look at this, it's only twenty up.
Mr. Chairman, nice to see all of you again.
Bertone.
Tony Bertone, AFB Inc., I'm here representing PCC Airfoils. If you're familiar with the site, what we're looking to do is reconfigure the, the entry, the parking lot, right as you pull in for visitors. It's a wide area of concrete, but it's not really lined properly. The street is not, or the drive is not coming off the street within line of the building. So, they lose a lot of spaces. So, with a little playing around with the entrance, we're able to pick up another dozen or so parking spaces, which alleviates a little bit of their problem that they have with visitors. And they have quite a number of visitors that go throughout the day to, to that site. So, I've read through the staff report. It doesn't look like there's a whole lot there. I know that something similar was done down the street at CRT. We tried to take the landscape and match that up as best we can with that, but we're certainly open to, you know, addressing a little more if you'd like. So, that, that's what I have.
Anything else, Larry?
Nothing. As the applicant stated, we, this, we, a couple of meetings ago, sought for, down the street for CRT to expand its standard. If they go within the front setback of an industrial building for parking, that the planning commission review it.
Okay. So, there's no problem with, as far as you're concerned?
No.
Okay. Questions for the applicant commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga?
I don't have any problem with the general idea. The berm that you're building is basically to kind of mitigate the sight, you know, the vision of the cars. Could you think about extending the larger berm to the west so that you would see less of the cars as you came down the street?
Yeah, we're actually maybe removing a tree there to make that work, so absolutely we can do that.
So, maybe extend it, you know, half its distance again so that would cut the visual, visual angle?
Absolutely, no problem.
Of the parking as you came down the street, just make it a little larger. Thank you.
Lancy, irrigation is not a problem?
Uh, no.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with two, well, actually three conditions. The third condition, the first, sorry. First two conditions are an irrigation system shall be provided for the landscape. Second condition was additional evergreen shrub plantings. And then the third condition would be what Mr. Varga had mentioned in that the western mound will be increased fifty percent.
No problem.
Second.
Second.
Just two seconds.
Ms. Semperman?
Yes.
Ms. Moritz?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic?
Yes.
Mr. Sudoti?
Yes.
Mr. Valeri?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Nice to see all of you.
It was easy. Where you been?
You know, it's, uh, it's been quiet out there, so. Everywhere except Menor, of course, right?
Gotta drum up some more business.
Right, we're working on that.
Okay. Larry, anything under the director's report?
No.
No? Okay, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.